I will call the select board meeting of October 8th, 2024 back into order after our recess. So the item we are on for one o'clock is conduct discussion to consider applicant interviews for retail marijuana host community agreements. The 1:00 p.m. appointment is Chief Cannabis LLC, DBA Chief Cannabis, 10 Canal Street, Born Adult Use Marijuana Retail Establishment. So, welcome. The way we've organized this is you have a half hour for your presentation and we'll kind of let you know when you have a couple of minutes left, followed by questions from the board. We allotted between 15 and 30 minutes for that, so there's plenty of time for questions afterwards. So you may begin, introduce yourself and let us know about your organization. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for having me here. First off, I'd really like to thank the board. I've been through this process a number of times for host community agreements and this was really, really well done. Myself and Chief Allen, can you hear me all right? Myself and former Chief Michael Allen have been through this a number of times and this was really done. Ton of thought was put in by the board, so thank you very much for that. Good afternoon. My name's Edward Dow. I'm a proud born resident. I've been here for 15 of the last 17 years with a brief stint over in Sandwich during COVID. And I was actually raised here until fifth grade, at which point my family moved to Falmouth until high school, and then they moved back to their house they maintained in Born. So I've pretty much, suffice to say, I've been here most of my life, which I'm very which I'm very proud of that fact. So, so, thanks Mike. So in Born, I was able to establish a business here about a decade ago. It was really a support group, a support system for Woods Hole Genographic Institute. I shipped out to see for a number of years. It afforded me, it was my first real journey in the engineering and regulatory side of things, and it afforded me a little bit of an opportunity to get into the cannabis space back in 2017. I saw that as my next stepping point. I'd been in that business for about seven years. I'd gone to see for a number of years prior to that, and that's about the time when I met Chief Allen. He was just recently retired chief, and I was looking into the cannabis space heavily, very interested in getting into it, and I was fortunate enough to be successful. And, I'm just going to flip to my bio here, and I was fortunate enough to be successful in my first endeavor, which was Somerset, Massachusetts. Demographics not unlike and size not unlike Born. I'm now celebrating my fifth year in operation down there on the retail side of things. We actually have been even longer on the cultivation side of things, and I'm very proud of that business. That business, I'm the CEO, it's Solar Cannabis Co. And I established that with my partner and my friend, Chief Allen, some time ago. He was just an advisor at that time. We've since done more work together and he's been with me ever since. And in this endeavor, I'm unable to own it directly, so he's actually my CEO on Chief Cannabis Co., which is the location we're applying for, at the base of the Sagamore Bridge. The old Friendly's, I'm sure you're all familiar with it. I have a lot of fond memories growing up there, eating there, and it's otherwise, it's just an abandoned building at this point. So, one, I think the location, 10 Canal Street, is a phenomenal location for this. Chief Cannabis is the proposed name, that's our DBA. We intend to be a leader in the space, hence chief. Also, chief has a different connotation in the cannabis space, smoking, and obviously it's a little bit of a tribute to my friend and partner, Chief Allen, here. So that is the brief overview on the Friendly's and myself. So with me currently, I have Mike Allen. I'll let him speak to his background a lot more, but he was, like I said, we've worked together for seven years now. I wouldn't trust anyone else to partner with other than him. Obviously, we hope to do it again at another location. This is now, this would be his second. We are successful in this endeavor, and I'm going to let him speak to his bio in a moment. We also have another local resident, Ashley Rooney. Her husband Brian, you guys may know, he's been on the fire department for 14 years. These are some of my best friends. She's heavily involved in the community, heavily involved in fundraising specifically for the fire department, but also for other endeavors, and I intend to really work with her to that effect. I know a lot of these local businesses that we can help out. I've worked with a number of them in the past. My company Solar, we currently work with a number of these locations, these companies already, and have received numerous accolades, so we continue to, I mean, we intend to bring that to Born as well. So, why partner with us? Well, because we've done this before and we know we can be successful at it. Mike's first store will be in Tingsborough if everything goes well, but this would be the second, and with, I'll throw every bit of my operational support that I'm able to do from Solar, but we've essentially, Mike's been tied to dozens of these, I have four directly, one in Rhode Island, three in Massachusetts, and we also have a couple licenses in New Jersey at the moment. But between us and my locations, I've been able to generate more than $40 million annually per year, and that just translates to a lot of, it's just revenue for all of my local municipalities. This location specifically is in the overlay district, it's an approved location. It's a freestanding, unoccupied 4,800 square foot building. It is the only proposed location over in Sagamore, so I think that is unique and that it gives us a real business opportunity over there. It exceeds the zoning requirements for parking, to which I'll have my engineer Zach Bosinski talk about, but we believe it's the perfect site to situate a dispensary, and I've seen a few of these, so I think this is, I think this is a really good one. There is also an overflow lot we don't intend to use for our own parking, but it's for commuter parking, that I think can only bring more business to that particular location. I've spoken to a little bit of my past, why partner with me? I've done this before. I offer a really good supply chain for this location, so down in Somerset, which I'd welcome you all to attend, it's about a 67,000 square foot facility that makes every product in our sector. So, from flour to edibles to vapes, et cetera, we make it, and we're always iterating and making more products. So, so that's really the main reason. We can offer operational support and we can offer a guaranteed supply chain. Some of my locations, which I'll gloss over, these are just dispensary locations. Supporting infrastructure, which I just touched upon, we have a lot of infrastructure, a lot of SOPs, a lot of things that would be really tough for the newcomer into our market to know, not that Mike is any newcomer by any stretch of the word, you've been in it since, since the beginning of the space, really. So with that, I'll leave you guys with some pretty pictures, but this is my facility down there. Again, I welcome you to join it, but it's a large-scale manufacturing operation. I'm going to skip to the traffic study. There was a comprehensive traffic study done on this site for the Starbucks, the new Starbucks development, which I believe was done in '21 or '22, and then we had since updated to have it revised, to tweak it, instead of saying the two retail locations that were proposed at the Friendly's, specific to our dispensary. I won't read through all these slides, it's in your applications, but in short, they concluded it would have minimal to zero, it would have almost no impact on the area. And I think you guys are all very familiar with that area. This is just some supporting documentation, and that is, that's that for the traffic study. With that, I'm going to introduce Zach from Bracket Engineering.
I'm usually saying good evening, not good afternoon.
I know.
I don't know what to do with this afternoon. All right, again, for the record, Zach Bosinski, professional engineer, Bracket Engineering. As Ed mentioned, we had put the site plan set together, so we've come out, surveyed the lot. It's the old Friendly's site. Again, this site was in front of the planning board when they developed the site for the Starbucks. At that time, they split it into two separate lots. The old Friendly's site, as Ed said, is a compliant lot under zoning. All the onsite parking is there, all the utilities are already onsite, so it's a pretty much ready site to go. No major stormwater improvements are required for the site, septic's all there. ADA parking would be as part of the site, we're just going to re-straight the lot for all that. Again, as Ed mentioned, 27 lot spaces are required under the retail use. We have 31 onsite, and then we have the shared spaces between the Starbucks lot and the commuter lot next door. Again, landscaping, this was what was previously approved through the planning department. It's pretty much going to be landscaping around the building. We have an onsite dumpster to the rear of the property that would be fully screened and secure, so no product outside of the building, and everything that's inside that dumpster would be locked up and contained onsite, so. We did a fire truck analysis again on the property, so public safety concerns, great maneuverability around the site, we've got multiple entrances to get in and around the site. Again, showing everything with the parking spaces, that the fire truck can still get in and out, and public safety is great for the site as well. As for the building layout, Chief Allen will get into a little bit more, but just in overall, there is a public entrance vestibule in, people would be checked in that way. There's eight checkout stations right there on the main lobby floor, there's a secure exit out, and then all the employee sections are in the back left-hand corner and supply in the back of the building from there. As part of the application, again, pretty much the building is staying as is, so it's updating on signage, and that would all be done in accordance with the bylaw. And again, back on the site plan, the old site does have a existing signage in the rear of the property that would be maintained, and all that infrastructure is there. And with that, I believe I'll turn it back over to the fellow.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. Before you all, I've been looking forward to this day and looking forward to presenting this project. My name is Mike Allen. As Ed has said, I am the CEO of Chief Cannabis. This is actually my second store, as Ed mentioned. Just recently finished a build-out in Tingsborough, Massachusetts of a store that, it's called House Premium Cannabis, and I'll show you a quick picture of that. This rendering is a pretty nice rendering in the store, actually looks pretty close to that, to that rendering. So it's, it's the style that we kind of went with. It's going to be a little different here with Chief Cannabis and what we're proposing at this location, but a lot of the compliance-related concepts are going to be very similar to the store that we built out in Tingsborough. Want to highlight my background in addition to what Ed has said. He likes to refer to me as chief, but that's because I'm a former police chief. I worked 30 years as a police officer up in Rochester, New Hampshire. I'm actually from Rhode Island originally, joined the Air Force, grew up in Pawtucket, Providence area, joined the Air Force right shortly after high school, and was in the Air Force, active duty for a number of years, and then went into the National Guard after getting out of my active duty term. One of the things that I was able to do when going into the cannabis industry after my law enforcement career was have an opportunity to really start my own business as a security and compliance consultant in the industry. Ed was actually one of my first clients. That's how I got to know him. Joined the Solar team in Somerset and helped him not only develop that site and build out that site, but build out all his dispensary sites as well. My wheelhouse, if you will, has been historically law enforcement, security, compliance. That was my lane for a number of years. But having worked in the industry for now almost eight years, I've had an opportunity to get involved in projects to where I can run the operation, and that's, that's how the Tingsborough project developed, and now hopefully, God willing, this, this project as well. So I've been able to ascertain really a vast amount of knowledge, working with all these different clients, not just here in Massachusetts, but I've worked with clients in Rhode Island, New Hampshire, New Jersey, Florida, really have built out more than 50 of these dispensary locations throughout the East Coast. So I have a lot of experience, know how to build them out, know how to design them in a safe and secure manner, know what's important to the community. I was on your side, I was on the local law enforcement side. I understand what the local community issues are, and I always take the time to try to learn the individual community concerns, because the, there's no, two businesses are equal. You've got to tailor your operation, you've got to tailor your security plan and your compliance plan to the community. Every community is unique. So I always do that upfront, and I will do that here if we're, if we're fortunate enough to get approved for a host community agreement. One of the first things that I would do as a, as a business operator here is meet, meet with local law enforcement and fire and get, get the concerns of the community, because these, these facilities really, and it's really in accordance with the state regulations, have to be very safe, very compliant. This is a compliance-driven industry. So, safety and compliance, I've always been number one in every community that I've, that I've done any kind of work in over the years. So I have gotten certified as a veteran business enterprise through the Supplier Diversity Office. What does that mean? It means that I get preferred status in terms of the review of the project with the Cannabis Control Commission, so we get expedited review. Why is that important? It gets us through the review process faster. It gets us to post-provisional license inspection faster, to the point where you get your certificate of occupancy and get open for business. It's a faster timeline. Faster timeline means faster opening, quicker revenue to the town of Born. So that's important. We also get some benefits through purchasing, we get some benefits through discounted fees at the state level, but it's very important. So in this project, I would do the same thing. Now, now the way it works with the state is veteran business status isn't granted through the Supplier Diversity Office until after you get your post-provisional license. So you can apply before, which I already have, you just don't get the actual status, if you will, or certification until after you've been provisionally licensed through the Cannabis Control Commission. So, talk about the security plan at the site, you've probably heard it from the other applicants already, but a lot of the, a lot of the security infrastructure that is put in place is required by, by the Cannabis Control Commission. So HD video surveillance cameras, 24/7 real-time access to the local police department, that may not have been mentioned in the previous presentations, but what I will tell you is I always want local law enforcement to have access to our video surveillance system. That's important because they can't be there all the time. You probably, like many communities, you don't, police chiefs always complain about not having enough police officers. So this really acts as a force multiplier in your, in your town. Crime and quality of life issues actually get enhanced by, by a dispensary being in a, in a particular area, believe it or not. So, so that's always something that we would want to do. In terms of access into the facility, I'll go through the floor plan in a little more detail than what Zach had talked about, but there's three levels of access in the facility. One is the, you come into an entry vestibule, so I'll go back to that real quick. You can see, you can see on, you can see on this slide up here on the, on the screen, my apologies for, it won't work on the TV, so I'm going to, I'm going to highlight it on the screen here, but this, this is your, your entry, entry into the facility for customers, so they'll come into that vestibule. That vestibule is a secure area, they can't get beyond that door. It's an access, electronic access control door until they've been positively identified through their government-issued photo identification. So, so they come in, they get checked in by security, security will check their ID. Not only will they physically, do a physical inspection of their ID, but also an electronic ID verification of that, of that identification. So, so it doesn't only scan the ID's barcode to check to make sure that they're 21 years of age, but it'll also do authentication. Authentication is checking the microprinting on an ID, checking the holograms. All the various security features of IDs get scanned by that electronic ID verification. That's important because I can tell you, just in working in the industry for the last eight years, there's a lot of fake IDs that try to come through a dispensary, just like they do with alcohol, right? So you've got to plan for that when you're developing your security plan. Not all security plans are created equal. The CCC doesn't require that. We go above and beyond. So, so that's an important feature. So once you get positively IDed, you enter into this access control door, so the security officer would buzz you in, you come onto the sales floor, very large sales floor, good-sized entry vestibule. We can handle queuing of customers inside the facility. The last thing we want is customers queuing outside the facility. Why? We don't want public consumption to take place, we don't want loitering in our parking lots, we'll have signage both inside and outside that deters that from occurring, and that's all monitored by our security staff through video surveillance. So video surveillance, I mentioned already, that will, that will be around the entire perimeter of the store, and also on the entire exterior, interior of the store. So essentially, there's, with the exception of the restrooms, that whole interior is covered by video surveillance. You come into the sales floor, you come up to one of the eight POS registers that we have, will have available. A customer would then show their ID for a second time, that gets visually inspected, and then they're allowed to make their purchase. We do have a couple of public restrooms here as well, male and female, and they'll make their purchase, and then they'll exit through this, what we call an exit vestibule. So that's an important security feature as well. Why? Because that deters any type of attempt to enter the facility or as customers would exit here. So if you have the same entry and exit into the, into the facility, it becomes more difficult to monitor, you know, customers coming in and out. So that,
A buzz out when you're leaving?
It's not a buzz out, but what it is, is you exit this door here, that door will close, you can't go back in.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have a door, it won't have a door handle, so you come into the exit vestibule, and then there'll be what we call, I commonly refer to as a crash bar, like an exit device, on that secondary door, and a customer would exit, and there's no way to get back in. So you'd have to,
And they can't enter from there.
That's correct. You can't enter that way.
So even if they let someone in, they'd be stuck in the,
That's correct.
And is that videoed in there?
That's all video.
Okay.
Video, video everywhere on the interior and exterior. And like I said, you know, Lauren, your police department will have access to that at any time, so we're very transparent. We want them to monitor it. They, most don't, most don't want that responsibility for liability reasons, but at least they'll have the ability to access it, particularly from their dispatch center if there were ever an emergency situation at that location. Alarm goes off, some type of an emergency occurs, God forbid, a robbery or a burglary takes place at the facility, they'll have access to all that video. So it's really, really important to have that partnership, if you will, with, with local law enforcement, because safety and security is number one to me, and I'm sure it's number one to everyone in this room. So that's the, that's the floor plan. Back to other things on the security plan. We have, you know, alarm systems, door access, every, every door is controlled by electronic door access, you can't get into certain areas if you're not authorized, it's all programmable. So only people, like for instance, managers and inventory staff would only have access to the vault. The vault is, is truly a vault. It is a, an access control door with dual authentication on the door, meaning not only do you have to use your, your access card to get in, but you have to have a secondary PIN number to get into that area. So it's an additional layer of security. The walls on the vault, all reinforced with steel security mesh. That's important, right? Video surveillance, obviously, in that area. Cash rooms, the other area of vulnerability, a vulnerability, a point of vulnerability in a, in a business like this, right? So we have safes within the area that the, that the cash safe would be stored in. We, that, those safes are bolted to the floor, so it would be very difficult for someone to remove a safe from that facility. Alarm systems, we have not just the primary alarm system, but a backup alarm system. So if the primary power went out, we have cellular backup that would, that would kick in, and so the alarm system never goes down in a facility like this. This essentially is the most safest facility in your community, without a doubt. So you can feel good about that, no matter where you locate your, your facilities here in Born. Prevention of diversion of minors, really important issue, I know in every community. Let me just kind of highlight some of the things that we do in terms of preventing diversion of minors. So, So number one, we strictly adhere to product limits, okay? So product limits are, you can only purchase an ounce of marijuana or its equivalent in concentrate, right? So gummies, tinctures, things like that. Whatever the equivalency measure, measuring, metric system that is used, that is what you're limited to. How do we track that? So we have in every facility in the, every facility in the state, and I'm going way too much on security here, diversion. But we have a seat-to-sale system that you have to, you have to follow, you have to go by through metric, right? So metric's the system and we have to follow that. So the products tracked from the time it gets planted in a cultivation facility till the time it goes out the door in a dispensary.
So you've got like three minutes.
Right.
Okay.
Sorry. Compliance, I want...
All right, we'll ask questions and fill out...
I got you. Compliance is a biggie with me. I'm a big compliance guy. I've been through, I've literally been through dozens of CCC inspections, right? Both spot inspections, like unannounced and announced PPLI inspections, PFLI inspections. So a lot of experience there. I've never had an issue with any facility that I've done work for. Compliance is a big thing in this space. Staff training, big thing. I do personally, training for all staff on policies. Every staff member goes through responsible vendor training that's state mandated. They get anti-diversion training. They get training on de-escalation and workplace violence. That was, that's something I specialize in. And emergency response procedures. Those are all things that I trained in when I was, when I was in law enforcement and I would bring that to the town of Bourne. Advertising and marketing, you've probably heard that. We're limited on what we can do. Very strict guidelines that the state uses in terms of advertising and marketing. Marketing and cash handling, cash handling doesn't leave the, cash doesn't leave the building unless it's through a licensed cash transporter, period. Never leave, never have cash leave in the building unless it's going out that way. Positive for me in the impact, I want to just highlight these real quick. Jobs. We're gonna have roughly 15 to 20, both line-level and management-level jobs in that facility. Obviously, our focus is gonna be on Bourne residents. That's who we target, that's who we want to try to target first and provide really well-paying jobs for the community. Obviously, there's economic development through the local taxes that you'd receive from the facility. And I won't, I won't, I'm gonna move on from that. So why chief cannabis? You know, we're gonna provide, in terms of community engagement, we're gonna provide volunteer support to things like the beach cleanup, Buzzards Bay Food Pantry, veteran organizations. Obviously, though, I'm passionate about that, being a veteran myself. So trying to provide support to local charitable events such as the Fishing for the Mission here in Bourne. Providing financial support for events such as National Night Out that the police department puts on in the community. That builds trust, that builds partnerships within the community. We want to be part of that. Involvement with local Chamber of Commerce and Rotary. When I was a police chief, I was involved with both of those organizations. They're important for a business to be involved in and we'll be involved in that as well. And essentially, whatever is important to the town of Bourne, we want that feedback. We want to be involved in things that are important to you. We don't want to just dictate, you know, what types of organizations we get involved in. Sorry about that. So we really want to hear from you as well. We're an experienced and proven retail operator. We have no safety and compliance concerns. We're fully, we have fully committed funding. We've got a million bucks in the bank with additional funds if we need it. Location, premier, Ed mentioned that, premier location. We have plenty of parking. We're the only facility located in the northern section of Bourne and we feel we're well-positioned there. Guaranteed supply, Ed mentioned that. Solar, solar, supply is so important in this industry. You want to make sure you have a guaranteed supply chain. And we have that with solar therapy, XP and our partner. Speed to market, that's, I've already mentioned it, nine to 12 months, you know? And that's probably going on the more conservative side. It's already an existing building, so we're really just renovating at that point. So I, when I, when we built out Tingsborough, it took five months. That's it. So it can happen fast. And we want it to happen fast because that's a quicker result for the town of Bourne. And we're locally owned, you know? We got Ed, we've got, we've got other members of our team that will be local. But Ashley, as Ed mentioned, is also on our executive team. I will end there and open, open the floor to questions. I'm sure you have some. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who wants to start with questions?
I'll go, why not?
Okay, Melissa.
So solar, I actually, that's the one facility I drove by and I was gonna go in one day when I was down in Dartmouth and I didn't get in. So I wish I had been able to go in and tour your facility as well because I have been doing my homework and going in and out of these spots. I think again, you know, we've all been so fortunate and all of the plans, I mean, you know, we've got great security plans, great locations and all of those really important things that are, again, our residents and people with children and, you know, visibility and all of those sort of security things are in order, it seems, in a lot of, in all these proposals. So again, I'm gonna go back to the consumer. So I think about some of the conversations I've had with, you know, different age groups, right? I've been trying to kind of poll people and see. So in speaking to someone over 65, a senior citizen, somebody in town, right, locally, there's a stigma, we all know, that goes with marijuana use and consumption of cannabis in some cases. So I understand, you know, we have the prevention so that we, security and all of that. But so is there any policies, and I should have probably asked this earlier maybe, is there any sort of, in your employment policy for sort of confidentiality, right? People come in and they're worried, you know, geez, I'm somebody's grandmother or I'm a, you know, I'm in here because obviously there's no medical facilities. I need something to sleep, but I'm kind of embarrassed to go into the store and somebody might see me. So is there, is there just anything in any of the policies written about that sort of confidentiality as related to sort of, almost like a doctor's office, right?
Sure. No, HIPAA is applicable, even in a recreational cannabis facility. So the answer is yes. So when someone, I guess I'll highlight the fact that when you, when you take someone's ID, whether it's at the check-in desk or at the register, that information that gets scanned by the ID scanner gets purged at the end of the day.
Okay.
So it doesn't get saved. The only way we would save anybody's information is if they wanted us to. Like, most places have a loyalty program or, you know, some type of incentive program like that that people want to give you their personal information so you can let them know about, you know, promotions that are going on in the dispensary. Events that we may have, you know, like a lot of places will do customer events, you know? Food trucks, you know, live bands in the parking lot, celebration of 4/20. You know, things like, events like that, most places will have some type of promotional event. So we never save a customer's information. And, you know, if a customer wants to have a private conversation about, not, you know, maybe there's a customer at the next register over that they just don't want to broadcast their, you know, the questions that they have. We always have that capability of providing customer education off to the side, right? So that, that really is kind of what's structured and set up to prevent someone from, you know, we want everyone to feel comfortable, right, when they come in, not be worried, oh my God, is my neighbor gonna, gonna see me in a dispensary? Yeah, so I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I know, thank you. I just thought, you know, I'm trying to think of questions that somebody might think of, you know? And some of the things that people have said to me in just conversations regarding, you know, marijuana in Bourne and the expectations and, you know, worries from some of the people who do, you know, partake. So thank you, that was a great question.
You're welcome. The other thing I'll add is, is we have consumer education material that's required by regulation that we provide to consumers. So it answers a lot of the questions that people would have about the product or safe consumption, just general things that are required by the regulation that you have to have in your consumer education material. So that, that does kind of limit or reduce the amount of questions that might come up for consumers coming in, particularly for the first time. They get a, when we have consumers come in for the first time, they generally get a primer on, you know, what the dispensary's all about, what type of products we offer. You know, we can't give medical advice, that's not allowable under the regulations. But we can, we can say something along the lines of, you know, we've been told people take this for sleep apnea or pain management, you know? But we don't give medical advice because that's not allowable under the, under the regulations.
Yeah, I think that's a good, the good advice is that, you know, how would somebody know? That's why I asked, that your ID is scanned and then purged at the end of the day. They wouldn't know that. So you just answered a really good question for somebody who might be wondering. Thank you, that was a great answer. Appreciate it.
Hey, Marit.
I just had a question. You mentioned you had an access to a million dollars with the financial piece of it. Where's that money coming from? It was a loan from Green Tech, is that how it corporate?
That's correct.
Because I, I didn't see like a documentation where that agreement was in writing.
Yeah, there's some bank account information in the packet, the application packet that we supplied. So there should be something in your packet.
But no agreement, like something, nothing?
Yeah, it's a bank statement.
Bank statement.
Yeah.
I saw that, yeah. And you don't foresee any issues with...
Not at all. Yeah, that, we'll be able to satisfy the payoff of that note, hopefully, God willing, pretty quickly. Because we anticipate that site doing well. It's really positioned in a great location. And the only, the only one in the northern section of Bourne, so you won't really have, you know, as competitive of a, somewhat of a competitive adventure.
Customer base, yeah.
Advantage, I meant, in that, being up in that area away from the other locations that are being proposed.
Jean?
I can see in the, in the materials that you gave us, you have a proposed hours of operation. Do you have any intent to deliver product as well or...
No intent, no intent. But certainly open to that. That is something that we could do. Partner with a licensed delivery operator if the town wanted us to get on. What I have found in working with other clients that, on my security consulting business, was that it hasn't really been profitable for a lot of dispensaries to partner with a delivery company. The delivery companies make money, but as a dispensary, it really doesn't, there's not a high demand. There hasn't been a high demand, at least so far, in the industry in Massachusetts.
Isn't it allowed? I don't think deliveries are allowed in Bourne.
Well, they've been delivering in Wareham. I think there's a business in Wareham that's been delivering.
A dispensary?
A delivery service. I don't know if they're a dispensary or if it's just delivery.
I don't think, I don't, I think that our zoning only allows, only allows retail. I don't think we have delivery. That's a caution we should probably clarify, but I don't think we have delivery. Wareham made, but it's, that's a town-specific thing.
Right, right.
So if you don't have a delivery license available, you, unless you put it, unless you constrain that within your bylaws, a delivery company could come in and deliver from a licensed dispensary to your community, unless you specifically restrict it, right?
Yeah. Complicated. The only other question I guess I had was also in regard to training. I've asked the other, what sort of, you know, consults you use or...
Sure. No, training, you mean staff training?
Staff training.
Staff training, that's huge with me. So in addition to the state mandated training that every staff member has to go through, to include myself, which is called the Responsible Vendor Training Program, which covers a multitude of different issues, we go above and beyond that and we do training on anti-diversion for all staff. We do training on workplace violence, de-escalation procedures. In this industry, you know, as in any retail, right? You deal with upset customers, you know? People come in and you've got to have training in that area. You've got to have an understanding of how to de-escalate situations so they don't, they don't rise to a higher level to where we have to call law enforcement, right? But that's always our, that's always our fallback, right? Is any handle, any situation that escalates to a certain level to where your safety, if you feel your safety is compromised in any way, we're calling, we're calling law enforcement to respond. So we do training on that. I do training on what's called active shooter or active attacker. I used to teach it when I was, when I was a police chief in my community. Actually, trained the entire city of Rochester's school department in that. So that was back when, you know, school violence, school shootings were really, really prevalent. Not that they aren't anymore, which is why we need to train on it still. And I do that training for staff to, you know, to me, predictable is preventable, you know, from a risk management standpoint. That's how I always kind of view, have viewed this industry. So if I can train people on things that I can, that are predictable, that are going, we think could potentially occur, we need to train people on how to respond in those situations. So we, and then, and then the general training on the products, you know, we, we'll bring suppliers in to do training with our staff on all the various products that we sell, right? So that consumers can get educated on the effects of a lot of the products, right? Because we'll have more than one supplier supplying products to our store. So it won't just be solar. Solar's our guaranteed supplier, but there are other suppliers out there that, you know, driven by the consumer, that they want us to sell in our store. So we give training on all the various products that we'll be selling. So I hope that answered your question.
Peter?
Can we go back to the internal layout plan?
Sure.
I'm looking in what I would see, the upper right-hand corner where the secured inventory is.
Yes.
Now you go, now you come in, you're screened, now you're in the area by the point-of-sale registers. You go down the corridor and the bathrooms are in the back. But on the right-hand side is your secured area. But is it really that secure? Because if those doors are not in a wand with a security detail, you're gonna walk right in that back door pretty quickly. So how safe really is it?
So there's a door there, you can't get through.
Yeah.
That, that's the POS area. So all the, call them budtenders, right? Will be servicing the customers who would stand on this side. If you went to the bathroom down this hallway, you can't get through that door unless you go through, and it's an electronic access control door.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Okay? And then secondarily, to get into the vault, there's another access control door. And there's all kinds of alarms within the, without getting into locations of, you know, panic buttons and motion sensors and glass breaks. And there's really a lot that goes into securing these facilities. It's extremely secure, that vault. It's the most secure room in our building, actually.
And what do you have for cloud storage for your, because if you have cameras on 24/7, I'm assuming you're storing your data or is in for the police or anybody to look at? But how many days do you store your...
So you have to have 90 days per the regulations and that's all stored on servers that are located in our IT rooms.
So at least 90 or no more than 90?
Minimum 90. More than, we always go above and beyond that. But you're required by regulation to have a minimum of 90 days.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question about the ownership percentages. So the owners are yourself and Ed Dab, but what are the percentages of ownership?
So 84, I believe it's 84% I own. Ed has a...
I thought it was 86 and 14.
I'm sorry, 86...
86 and 14.
14, 10 of which, 10 of which is going to solar proper, right?
9.9.
And then 9.9 and then, and then the other percentage is at... And then nine point nine, and then, and then the other percentage is Ed.
And what role, so Ashley is not an owner. She's an advisor, community engagement. What does that entail?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What does that entail, advisor, community engagement?
Sure, sure. So, so community engagement is a big part of what, what we plan to do. Her, Ashley being a local resident, she's involved now in community-related or engagement activities. We would want her to kind of be in the lead role of engaging with these organizations that we plan to provide, whether it be charitable, financial support, or volunteer hours. She'll oversee all of the community engagement activities for the company. Of course. Ed, Ed, obviously, we're all, we all take a part in that, but that, that'll be her role to kind of be the lead face to engage with the local community groups.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, do you have anything else?
I think I'm good. I think we, I mean, the, the presentations were very thorough, and all the, a lot of the questions, like I said, I had ten questions, and the majority of them were already answered because your presentations had it. So, I appreciate everything you've done.
Just on the security piece, I've been reading a lot of it. When you say that the police department has access twenty-four seven, is that through a remote login?
Correct.
Type of, okay.
They'll be given their own username and password, and they can remotely log in through an internet connection right into the system. So, they can not only view live video, but also look at recorded video as well. So, something happens, they need a still shot or a video clip of, of something, they'll have, they'll have the ability to access that.
Jean?
I think most of my questions, my questions have been answered, and it was a very thorough presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Melissa.
I have, I have a question about sort of saying, medical marijuana cardholders. So, you're not a medical marijuana facility, but do you have products that would be helpful to medical marijuana patients?
Absolutely. There are products that, that are helpful to different conditions. Now, we can't give medical advice, as I mentioned earlier, so it's, we have, there's, there's a fine line there from a regulatory standpoint. The CCC is very strict about what we say to, to, to people who are there for medical reasons, but, but we can make suggestions in terms of, you know, there have been customers who have told us, told us that they have had good experience with pain management using this product, you know, but, but without, without making a recommendation, if that makes sense. So, so that answers the medical advice question, but discounts, why, and I, I don't know if you had questions about that. That's a no-no in the, in the, the CCC compliance world. We can't offer discounts on, on, on product by regulation. So, it's, it's, it's a tough situation. I don't necessarily agree with it, but I wish we could give medical patients who come in with a medical card a twenty percent discount like they get when they go to a medical facility, right? That would be great. Maybe they'll change the reg someday that, that allows us to do that, but as of now, not, not something we can do.
So, if I can add, so, so most, a lot of the, so just for the people at home, so many of the products that are in these facilities, they, they may even specifically state on the package what it could be helpful for, correct?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep, they do. Sleep, for instance.
Right.
You know, there's, there's actual product.
And there's energy.
Yeah, product called sleep. You know, that's the name, right on the package, right?
Zonk or something, right, right, exactly. Sure.
And it's got melatonin in it usually, or, you know, things like that. Different, you know, it's different conditions.
They're not all THC related. Some of them have other things.
There's many people that go into these dispensaries, and I, and I know this guy, obviously, I've been in the industry for eight years. I've talked to a lot of people doing community meetings and, and talking to both medical patients and just consumers who are users of cannabis. A lot of people don't, don't take, don't consume the product to get, to get a high.
Right.
It, it, they, they do it because, for medical reasons, you know, whether it's pain, sleep, PTSD, you know, it's different, different things that people take it for, so.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, Emily.
So, how involved are you going to be on like a day-to-day basis of the operation? Or are you hoping that you hire staff to?
I'll be very, particularly in the front end, very involved, doing not just the CEO duties of, of, of the dispensary, but also from a training standpoint, as I mentioned. I, I, I feel like it's important for me to be involved at a minimum on a weekly basis, but, but I'll, I'll be there, I'll be there as, as often as I can beyond that, and, and we'll have, like I said, a general manager that we'll hire, hopefully a Bourne resident, assistant managers, both on the inventory and on the retail side. That's a typical structure that you have in a, in a retail dispensary. And then you have lead, usually lead supervisory staff, and then, and then budtender, security staff, inventory staff. It's, you, you need all those positions, and, and I like, the way I've set these up in the past, and I, and it seems to work really well, is take more of a hybrid approach to hiring, so people get cross-trained into different positions. And it, what that does is, it, it helps with retention. It helps with engagement with your, with your employees. You've got happier employees. It helps with morale of your, of your staff. So, happy employees are, make happy customers, you know, and, and so that's a really important aspect of this business. It's what sets you apart from someone going to your dispensary versus maybe one down the street, right? Is that, that customer engagement and customer experience that they, that they, that they have is, is the differentiator, because everybody else does essentially the same thing, you know, in terms of the, the security and the structure and so forth, product lines.
So, the board, has any other questions? We're good? The board will be interviewing applicants. We do it today, and we have another three interviews tomorrow. At the end of the day tomorrow, we will determine our next steps. Administration will be contacting each of the applicants when the board has decided who we, we will be talking with for HCA agreements. So.
Great.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for, for having us, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll swing in and check out your store this weekend. I think I'll be in Dartmouth.
Please do.
I almost went in the other day just to kind of view and check out your.
Yeah, that's, that's the newest one, that one in Warwick. Yeah.
Yeah, I was running late, so I couldn't go in, but I will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is correspondence.
Correspondence for October eighth, two thousand twenty-four. A Keno license.
Anyway, I'll talk to you soon.
A Keno license application for Grill and More Restaurant. And that's it.
We're gonna put that on a new, on agenda soon. How soon do we have to have that on an agenda?
So, you only have to put that on a future agenda if you want to deny it, if you want to object to it. So, otherwise, it goes to effect. If the board wants to discuss it, discuss it and possibly deny it, we should put it on next week's agenda.
Yeah, let's put, let's put it on so we can make a vote. We can't vote really on this, this correspondence, so.
That's a good, successful thing. So, I'm just curious, and I wanted to ask, and I'm just gonna ask while we're here in this session with everyone. So, I, I mean, I hope too, I know that this is our charge to, you know, figure out who the license, you know, who we want to get into the agreements with, but in my opinion, I'd really, I mean, are we gonna get any feedback from the town administrator's office on what recommendations?
We're going to discuss, at the end of the day tomorrow, we have an agenda item to discuss what we're gonna do from there. And I felt we'd go through all six and then have the discussion. So, that's an agenda, we have to have an agenda item to discuss it. So, we'll, we'll talk about that tomorrow.
All right.
Whether we need extra time for, for, you know, rating, for collating ratings, for whatever. So, that's on the agenda tomorrow.
Yeah, it's just important to meet a, you know, seeing as they do the day-to-day, what that opinion is, if that makes sense.
I don't feel comfortable voting tomorrow after all six are done. I hope that would be some.
I didn't say we were gonna vote. I said we're gonna discuss what our process is tomorrow, so we're not gonna discuss it now. We don't have an agenda item for now. We're gonna discuss it tomorrow.
And I will bring up my concerns then.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Any further discussion? Say none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, two unanimous.